Slowed us down in practice. He helped us on our little skills which ultimately build up to a offense and a better defense which is what brought us back into games. Instead of losing by thirty, forty points, we ended up losing by ten fifteen and also coming out with a few wins which is pretty fun. Um, yeah, that's about it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Heather Lushke, as you all know, and I'm here to talk about the same topic. However, I'm on the opposite side of the venue on this. I've had one daughter have Mr. Gunderson as a basketball coach since seventh grade, as Tatum Picar has, and I had another daughter that had him for three years as a basketball coach as well. My daughters have not had a great experience with Coach Gunderson at the helm, and I would disagree that he is responsible for the wins or the somewhat success of the program last year. We finally had three seniors who stuck with it and who have been playing that were part of that success and would have been part of that success if he had been there or not. My biggest fear is if you keep Coach Gunderson in the position of a head girls' basketball coach, we're not going to have a program. We have girls who do not play because of Coach Gunderson. So I think the big thing here is he's been at the helm for the last three or four years. What has he done to grow the program? Where have those girls gone? I think what you need to be concerned about, because you still do have players like Tatum and my daughter Kara and Callie Banks who want to play basketball this year. What are we going to do to grow the program? And I don't think keeping Coach Gunderson in that position is growing the program. I think it's done the opposite. I think we've lost players because of him. My girls have personally not had good contact or experiences with Coach Gunderson. I've heard the sarcastic comments. I've heard the belittling comments. My own daughter has received a very negative email from Coach Gunderson. So in my opinion, I think he's been given an opportunity. I think he's been given a chance, and unfortunately, I haven't seen more positive than I have seen more negative come from the fact that he's been the head coach. So I would encourage you to release him from head girls' basketball and start thinking about this program because we've got a really great eighth grade squad coming up, and I think they deserve a really, really good coach. I'd like to see the program grow for not only their sake, but for my daughter who's a junior. She's got two more years to play basketball here. Thank you.
Brad Singwald, same topic. I'm on the same side as Heather. Recently spoke in regards to softball. Last year, I know, was a very negative year for a lot of the girls. And there was some, some girls who did have a positive experience. You're going to have that in any sport. And I'm coming at this not so much as a parent. My daughter wasn't affected on the field per se, but I'm also a teacher and a state high school league certified coach of over twenty years. I've done, got over twenty years of coaching experience. And I can say the games that I was able to make for the softball program this spring, I saw things that I've never seen any coach not do before. There were no huddles after games to talk about good or bad. There was one huddle that I did see all season, and that was in the playoff game, and that was after the first inning, after a very negative first inning. A lot of negative comments to the girls. There would be girls, and I've become kind of the de facto spokesperson for a majority of the parents who know that I coach and would come to me at games, what do you think, Brad? What's, why is this happening? Honestly, I don't know. I've never seen this before. I'm baffled. It got to the point where many of us as parents were directing the girls during the games because there was no direction during the game coming from the coach as far as positioning players, moving them left or right or things like that. I also coached the sixteen-year softball team during the summer, so I had seven of the players this summer, and of those seven, five of them, it took weeks to get a lot of their self-esteem back after this spring. And five of them, as well as many of the parents, said, "Thank you so much for making this fun for the girls again." It's a world of difference, and it was very visible. You could just see it, the difference in the girls. There also were, a lot of the girls' self-esteem was hurt this spring, and I'm very concerned about their psyche, their self-worth, their values of how they view themselves, because it was very negative, to the point where I know one of the girls whose, whose parents told me after every single practice, she wouldn't say anything, but she'd get in the car, drive home, and tears down her eyes every single night because of how negative her experience was. So I would, I would strongly recommend moving on. As of right now, I know four girls, on top of the six who did not play this past year, who quit the year before because of the coaching situation, I know right now, four for sure will not be back next spring to play softball. And I've heard rumored that there are two to three older girls who are strongly considering not coming back. Over the two years, if those seven don't come out with the six last year, that's thirteen girls. That's a whole team over two years that have quit due to the situation. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Maggie Barr. I'll be in eighth grade this year. I'm in basketball, but not softball. Coach Gunderson has always tried to help me improve. This summer, he held little practice sessions for everyone who wanted to come. I went to most of them. He helped me with my shooting form and other basketball, such things. Also, he wants to try to keep as many eighth graders down playing eighth grade basketball as he can. I'm afraid if there's a different coach, they will move a lot of us up, and a lot, I know a lot of us are not ready for that pressure and responsibility. I don't want, I don't know what he is like in softball, but in basketball, he is a good coach, and I hope he can continue to coach for Cannon Falls. Thank you.
Others? Okay, we'll close the public input section and move down to the finance report. Josh?
We'll keep this brief. This is a pretty short report this month. It's just the cash flow. As fiscal year sixteen ends and fiscal year seventeen begins, we'll have our audit come in, per usual. They'll be in in the week of September nineteenth. Busy getting ready for that. With the current office situations, a little difficult and challenging summer, we found ways to work around it. And hopefully, we'll be into our offices soon so that can proceed a little bit more smoothly. But present here now is the cash flow, and you see on the top, our bank balances and where we're at. The top merchants checking account would be the actual cash on hand. The other two, the TD Ameritrades, are the bond proceeds to help pay for the construction project currently taking place. Of note, since this went out, we've been reimbursed somewhat to save from the TD Ameritrade for expenses that we've made payments for in the building construction fund. So really, what we're looking at in cash is just under three million with some outstanding checks to go, and the TD Ameritrade or the construction fund is down to about four and a half million dollars remaining there. As in terms of on schedule for finance of the project, we're right on schedule, and like Ms. Key said, ready to move in when school starts Tuesday after Labor Day. The only thing that's really kind of big to note here as we show through mid-October is the ideas payment on October fifteenth, nine hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars, and it's significantly larger than other ideas payments. The reason being for that is in August, we get a cleanup of the fiscal year sixteen or the prior year fiscal years payment to the district. We get paid on a schedule of ninety, ninety-ten, meaning ninety percent of the current year's funding comes now with the holdback of ten percent. So you'll see in the August payments for ideas that cleanup is ten percent of fiscal year sixteen money coming to us. It all works out to be a hundred percent as long as enrollment stays relatively consistent, but it's just one thing to note within the cash flow projection. If there are any questions you have, I'll do my best to answer, otherwise that's what I have for you.
Questions for Josh?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Jerry made the motion. Kurt seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Carried? Consent agenda. Items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted in one motion. In the event a board member wants to discuss any of these singularly, will be removed for separate action. Everyone had a chance to look at them? If you don't have any questions, I would look for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Rob.
I'll second.
Seconded by Jerry. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Carried. Consideration to approve the second reading of the policy seven twenty-one. Beth? We approved the first reading. Last time I read it, it says...
You did. This, the attachment is there. If, does anyone need a copy of that brought up? You've all had a chance to look at it. It's a second reading, very universal policy that we have to have on the books, so it'd be round two.
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading.
I'll second.
You're ahead of me here. Motion by Kurt, seconded by Brenda. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Carried. New biz. Truth and taxation date set up for December twelfth at six P. M.
This is our very exciting meeting that happens every December. The room is usually packed. I would encourage all of you to come. Truth and taxation. It's again, one of those mandatory settings that we have.
I'll make a motion.
Is that you, Chair?
Yep.
I'll second.
Seconded by Rob. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Carried. So we'll take a little bit of a breather here on new items. Matt is here, our senator. Matt Schmidt.
Did I send you to the wrong building?
No, this is great.
Oh, good. You can go ahead and come up right up here.
I have a handout. As a son of a school teacher, I always have something prepared to hand out here, so if you'd like to throw this in the... Folks, I'd like to take one of these, too.
Well, again, please forgive my informal dress tonight. I've been doing a lot of door knocking this summer. So if I'm not running like a fool down the middle of the street in a parade, I'm probably knocking on your door. But I just wanted to take this opportunity to brief you on the 2016 legislative session. Seems like just yesterday, we were talking about the 2015 session, and here a year goes by, and we're back at it. So I'm guessing you know the feeling of how fast time goes by. But I guess there's no sugar coating it, folks. Twenty sixteen, the good, the bad, and the ugly. On the good front, we were able to continue the recent trend of fiscal responsibility at the state level, and we have continued to run surpluses, not deficits. The Senate took office about three and a half years ago facing a three billion dollar budget problem, a billion dollars of immediate deficit, another billion dollars of school funding shift that you're probably familiar with, and then another billion dollars of inflation that's not accounted for. And we've turned the corner on that period of deficit after deficit after deficit, and now we're running surpluses. And so in an election year, with everyone on the ballot, we were able to withstand the temptation to either tax cut or spend our way from surplus back to deficit. Sounds like a joke, but it's a really important point. It's so important for Minnesota to be running deficits, to be back in the black, so that we're able to do our part to fund our education system, our roads and bridges, our local government aid, those sorts of commitments around the state so that you can plan ahead, not year to year, but three to five years out. And so the situation with our budget is incredibly strong. Just two weeks ago, our credit rating was restored to triple-A status, makes it more affordable for Minnesota to bond, for roads and bridges, and other infrastructure. And so that's a big, a big accomplishment for this state. It wasn't until 2011 that we had our triple-A status, looking back. And so the next legislature, whoever's in charge, is going to be in a much better position than this Senate was three and a half years ago. And so that's really encouraging for school funding and local government aid and that state-local partnership that we talked so much about. So that continued fiscal responsibility, big accomplishment here, continued that trend moving forward. Another thing that we were able to do with our supplemental budget bill this year is double down on a really successful program, our border-to-border broadband grant fund. In the last two years, we've extended high-speed internet to about twelve thousand homes and businesses around the state, not the country, the state, and also about a hundred community anchor institutions like schools and libraries and hospitals. About twenty percent of greater Minnesota homes and businesses lack access to high-speed internet. This year, we doubled down on that, that really successful program, put thirty-five million dollars into it. You may be familiar with a kind of a pilot project, five hundred thousand dollars for broadband buses and student connectivity, and those funds are going to be deployed this fall and will help districts this year with, with their student connectivity needs. So I know that we've kind of exchanged emails on that in the past, Superintendent. If you'd like any more information, please don't hesitate to let me know. But that, that sort of targeted investment in 21st century technology is something that this Senate has taken very seriously, and when it's all said and done, we hope to have, you know, well over twenty, thirty thousand additional homes, businesses connected with high-speed internet. And so we just want to keep winnowing away and making sure that all homes and businesses are connected around the state. So those are some good accomplishments this year. In terms of the disappointments, we got the ball to the one-yard line on a comprehensive transportation funding package, also on a bonding bill and a tax bill. That tax bill had, I think, a hundred and seventy-plus votes out of two-hundred-and-one legislators, so it was very bipartisan. Couple of good provisions in there that provided property tax relief, and also for our rural school districts, the way that we treat capital referenda, and it makes it a little bit easier for egg owners and take some pressure off of them. So a really important piece for rural school districts, hoping, I'm still optimistic, I'm hoping that there's going to be an opening this fall yet to get that bill passed in a special session, but there's been an impasse, and, and we can't go back in without an ironclad agreement. And so we want to make sure that we have that agreement before we're to go forward. Likewise, with the capital investment bill, interest rates are incredibly low, as you know, and, and needs are about as great as they've ever been, five billion dollars plus in, in capital investment projects requested around the state. And so we want to keep up with, with that unmet need in, in our capital budget. And then in terms of the ugly, folks, we're in the middle of a campaign season here, so good luck to us all in enduring the next couple of months. But I just want to emphasize the fact that, you know, we've really turned the corner on a decade-long budget challenge in Minnesota, and it's so important that we've got our triple-A credit rating back, that we're running surpluses, not deficits, and that, you know, we can, we can plan ahead for continued funding formula increases. And just as important, some targeted investments in rural districts that go beyond the formula. We've really focused on facilities funding in the last couple of years and other programs that disproportionately benefit our rural districts. And so the formula is a great driver for education funding, but it's not the only tool that we have to work with. And so the Senate's been very serious about looking at some other tools that can help our rural districts out. With, with that said, you know, making sure that we're able to attract and retain high-quality teachers, that we're trying to strike the right balance with standardized tests. I think legislatures around the country have gone too far in standardized tests in the, in the past, you know, twenty years, and so trying to find that right balance so that you have accountability, but you also have common sense in the classroom as well. And so those are some of our priorities, making sure that we have that pipeline of talent with teachers and staff and administrators coming forward in the years ahead, and also making sure that the state's doing its part to fund education. It's one of two things that are in our constitution, education and roads and bridges. We want to make sure that we do them both well. And so with that said, I would stand for any questions or concerns you may have. Otherwise, really appreciate the chance to join you tonight.
I've got one small thing. I know you're sick of me, but I'm on legislative committee again for next year, so you're going to hear from me a lot.
Never sick of you. Come on, Superintendent.
After testifying a lot of times up there this year, it was really interesting to see how hard you work on a lot of things, and I'm very proud that you do that. With that said, the broadband grant that just came out, it, it comes to us on August ninth and due September first.
Sure.
I'm doing everything in my power to get that done on time, and so are all the other superintendents racing to get that done. One, the timeframe was really bad, back-to-school time. And second, I'm, it's really getting old when everything in Part A is dependent on free and reduced lunches and, and some of those things. So, you know, I'm doing Part B so that we can get some internet services on our buses and things like that, but you talk about equality in these districts, and it's not fair when I'm just as small as another district, but because I don't have enough students on free and reduced, it, it limits the things that I can get from my district. I'm very frustrated with that. Second thing is fight really hard this fall for that one-yard line, as you referenced. Our farmers do not deserve to pay more just because we pass a referendum. If anything, they support our schools more than anybody in a multitude of ways. So I really, really encourage you to get that through this fall. A lot of referendums, you know, could be passed and worked, and you know in Cannon Falls how hard we worked to pass that last one. So I just keep up the good fight. Every time I've seen you up at the Capitol, you're always a supporter of education. So I'm not criticizing you. I'm just saying these timelines are ridiculous because we're all really struggling to get that done by September first, and it's not an easy grant.
And with that, with that, you know, there's two different grant programs. One is our border-to-border broadband fund, which has been, you know, teed up for actually a couple of years now, and that, that closes in October. With this, this broadband bus, kind of student education-focused pilot program, if you will, there was only five hundred thousand dollars devoted to it, and I followed up with Department of Education and others. It was intentional, actually, to have a narrow window, just so that they were able to keep the, I guess, the responses to a manageable level with, with the level of funding. So basically, the districts that are most serious are going to focus in on this narrow window, put their applications forward.
Senator, unfortunately, that's not how it goes. What happens is the districts that have an assistant superintendent or principals that don't have anything to do, they're getting it done right now. I'm working at six o'clock in the morning and ten o'clock at night trying to get this done. So with all due respect, it, it isn't how it goes. It's if you have an assistant, if it gets done.
I understand that. The other thing is the House really wanted these funds deployed this fall. So the, the department didn't get to it until July, because that's when the law became effective. So this one year, this was really the only thing that could have happened. I totally hear your concerns with this, and I hope, hopefully, it's a successful pilot program, and it's something that we're able to do more of down the road. And so I hear you loud and clear, but unfortunately, in this year one, this is just the way it was going to be. So, anything else, folks?
Maybe not directly towards school, but I know deficit's not good, but too much of a good thing either with the surplus that we have, and they're large surpluses. Is this the plan for the future to keep getting these huge surpluses, which I guess I'm at a pain is, I'd like to know where the money's coming from.
Sure.
To, to generate these surpluses that we then decide where to spend it. Is there a plan to get closer to really what we need? I know you're talking about roads and bridges, but if we budget there and get the money for that instead of having all this surplus?
It's a great question. Thank you for asking that. And so just kind of turning back the clock here and looking at Minnesota the last fifteen years, the mentality in St. Paul is that, you know, pretty much since the recession of two thousand and one, following nine eleven, that the economy was going to rebound next year. We can play games with the budget, and things will work out. And that was the mentality in St. Paul for over ten years. And you know what? The economy never really did rebound, and we, and the legislature and the state ran deficit after deficit, and you saw what that did to schools. You saw that, what that did to local communities with LGA, cuts to services, property taxes went up. And so what happened in 2013 is we did address the budget situation once and for all. There was a tax bill that did increase some taxes in Minnesota. At the same time, though, Minnesota's economy took off. And so what we've seen is unexpected surpluses, but they're short-term in nature. They're not projected for the long haul. And you look at this year, we, we had nine hundred million dollars in surplus this year. Next year, predicted to be half of that, and in the next budget period that follows, inflation cuts it away. And so basically, we have a very short surplus window here to work with. We're not going to be running surpluses, you know, ten years down the road unless the economy does better than expected. But right now, our state economists tell us that we've got a narrow window where we can expect to have sizable surpluses, be very careful in committing the state to any ongoing tax obligations or spending that we just don't have the dollars to pay for. And so that's why the challenge this year and last year was, how do you, how do you deploy those resources in a smart way that invests in Minnesota but doesn't put future legislatures in a position to be running deficits? Because I got to tell you, the worst thing that we could have done is, is had too rosy of a scenario moving forward and put future legislatures and the state at risk by running surplus, I'm sorry, driving surpluses into deficits. And so there was a lot of focus on using some of those one-time dollars for one-time infrastructure investments, whether it's broadband or, or transportation. There's a lot of emphasis on water infrastructure around the state, you know, the sorts of things that may not always catch headlines but are really costly for communities, and when the bill comes due, it's a big expense. And so that's been our focus, that kind of one-time investment that we're able to utilize. I think we want to be able to look out and make sure that any budget decision we make is, is in the long-term interest of Minnesota. And so we've been very conservative in making commitments, whether they're new, you know, tax cuts or new spending. And so it's a great question. I think it's really easy to look at the headlines and say, geez, Minnesota's got a billion-dollar surplus, you know, we've got it made. You look at transportation. The experts tell us that we underfund roads and bridges eight hundred million dollars a year. And so that's this huge surplus every year that we would have to be leveraging to solve that transportation funding out of the general fund. And so there's just much more to the, kind of the story, but it's a, it's a great question. And, and again, we're trying to find that sweet spot where we can make some targeted investments in the short term, but also we don't set the long-term future of the state in jeopardy for deficits. And, you know, that's the worst thing for our schools, is if the state's running deficits, how are we going to put two percent on the funding formula, you know, year in and year out, if we've got sizable deficits to deal with? So, so thanks. I hope that makes sense. That's kind of the abbreviated version, you know. There's always more to the story, but that's, that's the nitty-gritty. So thank you for that. Otherwise, I don't want to filibuster your meeting, but I'd be lying if I said it wasn't a beautiful night outside. So you probably want to get me out the door here so you can move down your agenda. If anything ever comes up, though, don't hesitate to give a holler, and good luck with that grant and getting back into school. I know it's a really, really busy time of year for y'all. So my sympathies, but...
I'm on it one more year on that committee, so you're okay.
Very good. Well, I, Superintendent, and members, it's a pleasure to run into you, whether it's in Cannon Falls or St. Paul, so let's be sure to stay in touch. All right, thanks a lot.
Thank you for coming.
I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, back on. We're at item two in new biz. Consideration to approve the sixteen-seventeen restrictive procedures policy from G C E D.
This one is not in your packet just because it's simply so big. Are, you have a rep that's on the Goodhue County District, if they want to pipe in at all or if Sharon wants to. This is one of the standard procedures that all of the districts that belong to Goodhue County District will be approving tonight. My recommendation would be to move forward.
Motion?
I would make a motion to approve that.
Brenda wins. Second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Rob. Other discussion?
Just on the policy, no second readings on this one, too.
Not on these. No. Great question, Rob. Not tonight. Not on these for Goodhue County District.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Carried. Consideration to approve the annually reviewed policies as listed in two oh eight. This review does not require a first and second.
Right, and, and maybe Mr. Sebenar can happen if he wants to. These are the annual policies that you typically do every year in kind of a lump sum. There's been no alterations, so we suggest to go ahead and move forward with those as well.
I'll make a motion to consider, or to approve the annual reviewed policies.
Motion by Kurt.
I'll second.
Seconded by Rob. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Carried. Consideration to approve the sixteen-seventeen superintendent goals. Annually, as part of our procedure, we have an evaluation of not only our administrators, our principals, but also our superintendent, and that is run by this, the board. We have a rather lengthy evaluation that we do, and comments are made, and from there, we glean out the data that we can use, and we have, we finish our evaluation with the soup at that time. Along with that, comes the goals from the school board, and Beth provides us with her own personal goals. We try not to load up goals. You can have ten or fifteen, but really, if we, if we get it down to a concise number, I think we're far better off because they're attain, they're more attainable. So Beth, you've listed your goals, I think.
Well, after we met, and we went into closed session after the last board meeting and, and talked about some of these, one of the goals is going to be curriculum improvement. We're going to really make some steps forward into making a long, just like we did with the ten-year facility plan, looking at ten years out, what we want to do with our curriculum. I think we're really looking at some great things with Ms. Dombeck on board and really aligning our technology curriculum with the other curriculum, so that's one of them. Personal growth, working on different meetings. I'm the chairman now of the Mesa Region One, so that's quite the honor to be selected for my peers to do that. But what that's going to do is improve everything that we bring back here to Cannon Falls, I believe, as well. I will continue, as you heard earlier tonight, to be the legislative liaison for our entire region as well. Goal three will be school promotion and awareness. This is something I'm working directly with the principals on. I don't want anyone looking at kindergartens in another school. That's, that's ridiculous that we are not out promoting our school. We all know it's great. We all know we want to be here, and now it's time to make sure that everyone in the area knows what we're doing in Cannon Falls and really promote this school. If you've ever had a side conversation with me, ever, whether it's Econo Foods or anywhere, you know that I live and breathe this school. That doesn't mean that people that don't live here don't know all the wonderful things. So I really want that to be a goal. And then the goal four was personal development. The board really talked about this at our breakout session, and I think it's so important. They would like the communication and not just written emails and things like that, and communication with the board, communication with the staff, doing a survey of the staff, making sure I'm reaching their needs and communicating effectively for them. So that was something the board brought up, and Mr. Britnall and I work on, even in our sit-down meetings every week before a board meeting, you know, we talk about communicating. sit-down meetings every week before a board meeting, you know, we talk about communication and how I can be a better communicator. So I think we've got four, although there's many subsections under there, four sections that I think are really going to serve our school well and benefit this school board as well. So I'm excited to get working on these. I think, I think they'll be really good for this year.
We have had some concerns from all the board members concerning our technology. We've invested a lot over the last five years, and sometimes we believe as a board that we don't, we don't feel the communication that we need. And it's a mammoth undertaking, and I think we're going ahead very well, but at the same time, maybe not as informed as we'd like to be, because people ask us, we're the, we're your voice. So that's an area that was agreed upon as, as one of the goals. In the communication piece, when you have this much staff and this many things going on, communication is a key to moving forward a positive way for the whole district. So we'll again focus on that, and those were goals that were brought up at the, at our eval time, so those are what we're going to focus on and move forward from there. Board, questions, comments?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Jerry, seconded by Brenda. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Carried?
Does this mean I'm getting an assistant superintendent?
No.
It's worth asking.
Consideration to approve the 1617 mentor program and stipend amount.
Well, you remember, for many years, we were fortunate enough to have a retired teacher run our mentor programs, done a great job, actually trained our new staff that are jointly doing this. What they're recommending is the same amount, $5,000, but not to be paid directly in a stipend. They'll keep track of their hours. That also pays for our mentors to have new mentees, and as you can see by the new hires tonight, we certainly have that need. The best thing you can do for a new teacher is have someone they can go to for kind of those off-the-wall questions. They're going to run a really great back-to-school class for the new teachers this Friday. If you are around and you'd like to stop by, it'll be the elementary eight to two-ish. I know I'm on kind of early in the morning, but welcome to stop by and meet the new teachers anytime you want. I would recommend moving forward with this. I like that we don't just pay the amount, rather they turn in hours, and we talk about what they did for those hours versus just paying a stipend. Last year, they didn't even come close to the stipend amount of $5,000. Actually saved quite a bit of money by doing a lot of things, a different method, but I would recommend moving forward with this.
I'd make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Brenda, seconded by Kurt. Other discussion?
Is the $5,000 a capped amount?
It's a capped amount. It allows us to budget for it, and if for some unforeseen, you know, we wanted to get additional training or something, or, you know, maybe they had to put in extra hours because a teacher was struggling, we could do that if we needed to. I don't foresee that, but it gives us kind of that capped amount.
Is there a number of people who can apply for it, for the mentor program, as far as being paid, or is it just one?
That's a good point. We do typically reach out to people that we think are going to match really well with, you know, the incoming. For example, if it's a fifth-grade teacher, we try to match them with a fifth-grade teacher. I know Amy and Lori are the leads on this, and they often talk to the principals and say, you know, who would match up with this person based on their needs or something like that? We try to rotate it around. I wouldn't say people come in dying and raising their hands, applying for it, but we try to work with people, so.
Okay, all in favor of the mentor program, as stated, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Carried? Consideration to allow the Historical Society to use a classroom at the CCC for the upcoming year.
Right, I guess necessarily, I didn't have to bring this to the board, but I really want you to be aware of what we're doing. The Cannon Community Center, I'm trying really hard to bring everything back to making it a community center like it used to be. The Shepherd Center is there, they're nonprofit. They've moved it over into the old ALC component, or the two classrooms there. They use the gym for pickleball and some things like that. We also have the School of Dance, which again is a nonprofit. They do donate about $100 towards utilities every month, depending on enrollment. If they don't have enough students, that doesn't always happen, but we feel like we have a really great relationship with these nonprofits. These are also people that are out in our community talking about our school. This is things that benefit when, when our older grandparents come down and do a reading program at our elementary. I think it's a great interaction between the elderly and our community and our children. We have another opportunity with the Historical Society here in town. They continually, I know third grade goes every single year, and if you haven't been to our Historical Society Center here in town, it really is a remarkable thing, and you really do learn a lot. When Steve Dabalo and Zach came to me and kind of talked about space issues, they want to have a lot of things out, and they want to have an area to work on things. Again, being a nonprofit, it seemed like the CCC was a good location for them. They won't be in there a lot, and it won't necessarily be a place where people are coming through the building, but it gives them a worksite. You know, instead of using their very valuable space at the historical center, now they can work on some things, artifacts and things like that in that building. So my recommendation would be to keep moving forward with, you know, offering the community center to be for nonprofits and things that benefit our community. I think what it's doing is building a great relationship between our community and the school. If you disagree with me, I'll start telling people no, but I just think it's a great opportunity that doesn't cost us anything, but it does allow us to keep those relationships up. So with that said, you know, people, they're making donations towards the utilities and things like that. I certainly don't think we can lose here. We need that gym very much for our activities. Again, so we, the building is still ours, we still keep it active, but keeping people in those classrooms does help keep things moving. Any thoughts? But that would be my recommendation to move forward with this.
This is a great partnership. Anytime that we can have our community use, use one of our buildings, it's just an asset to all of us. I think you'll all agree on that, just what we should do as a school.
I think it's a great idea, and I'm just going to just ask, what if, what if something was to happen where a company or organization came in and said, we would like an opportunity to utilize this?
They have.
And then all of a sudden, we, we don't, they don't have the space because we have this opened up to other, you know, and I don't mean to be...
Mister Dabalo being here would tell you that I have already told them they would be booted. No.
We're confused on that.
Yeah, yeah.
We understand that...
I'm very clear on that.
We're there by the grace of the empty space right now, but when it becomes a need for you guys to move us out, I'll just stand up and say, we have a problem that's described as, our building is like four guys in a phone booth, if I give you a vision. And we've got some long-range plans that might take three or four years to put us someplace with more space. One of the restricting problems is, one of the greatest pieces in our collection is that building, and Zach knows if we modify that building, we change it drastically. So we've got these volunteers, one of them is actually an assistant with a librarian at U of M that's done work for the Minnesota Historical Society, and she's anxious to work on some projects. And we're also willing to involve any students that want to, and eventually maybe turn it into a club, so it goes back and forth and work. We're excited about making it an asset for the school system, but hopefully this is a bridge to where we're going.
Thanks, Steve. I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
That kind of brings up a point I was going to bring up, and just, I guess, a question. With you guys, it's, you know, if someone else comes along, you get booted out, and with, as we go forward, is it like a month-to-month, is it on-call, if we need you out 30 days, and whoever, Shepherd Center, they're all pretty much...
It really, I have professed every relationship that we've had down there with, you can move here for now, Shepherd Center would be a great example. It allows them, they have grown so much.
Right.
And the amount of people that are down there using the Shepherd Center is tremendous, but they do know if that is something that we can drive revenue, and if I can find renters that would have a pay kind of thing. I mean, certainly that that's something, my main job is to make sure that we check into every revenue source that we can, but in the same breath, those relationships are so vital, and if I get a history club out of this, I know that's not going to happen right away.
We're excited.
This is, this is just a huge win. So we've been actually talking about this for almost a year. I don't... Yeah, it's been quite some time. It isn't that we just want to open the door to every nonprofit. This has been a lot of meetings and casual conversations at Rotary and things, talking about this, so...
Yeah, I just shared with my board that the school system's got to get something out of this, too, and so we started thinking about maybe a history club, and it's gone any, you know, even further than that, and I won't go into all the details on that, but we know in short term, and then Beth has brought up the mural, murals in front of the auditorium, and Zach has already earmarked a grant that we expect that we could be successful at it, and so there's a lot of excitement to move forward with that. So it's back and forth, whatever we can do, you know, so.
And what's nice about that is I've talked to some of the Wastito crew out there, and what we would like to do is celebrate all the different buildings we've had in the history of Cannon Falls, way back to the Stone House and, and the Wastitos and all of those kinds of things. So above the auditorium would be a great opportunity for us to kind of showcase the different stages, you know, back when the building was just 1962, and then the add-on, and then even 2007, and just kind of creating a mural out of that. So we've started the process, we'll see where it goes.
Yep, we'll talk about it again.
Yeah.
Okay, look for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Rob on the motion, Kurt on the second. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Carried? Number seven, consideration to approve the recommendation to non-renew a head coaching position. Even Jerry wanted to strike number seven. We'll call this softball, so we can get the ball rolling here. So recommendations by the AD, after a long journey, I guess, would be to non-renew our softball coach. And again, even though that the white elephant in the room is the man's name, we should refrain from that. I would also like to recognize Jerry has been going through this process on behalf of the school board as our extracurricular, and it's, people sometimes don't understand, it's just not a decision that you just say, hey, let's do this and be done with it. It's, it's pretty arduous, and it's, it's not done without a lot of thought. And on one hand, we hear people discussing the need for coaches to be coaches, and on the other hand, we hear that coaches will use a little blue, blue language, which is, you know, uncalled for at any level for any reason. But you wonder how much, how much guidance, how often we've dug in the well and said, could you improve that? Was there, was there a plan in place? So I'm not going to speak anymore about softball, but I would like to know what's our next step? Do we just make a move, motion based on the recommendation of AD and admin?
I think, I think we have to make a motion just to start, start the discussion.
Yes.
So I'll make the motion to approve the recommendation to non-renew.
I'll second the motion.
Kurt made the motion, Rob made the second. Other discussion? Let's open it up.
Jake, you want to speak first?
Yeah, I think he's given us his recommendation, and that should be solid for him. Now, I think this is more board discussion.
I guess my first, and Jake, I don't know if softball was the one you wanted off or not, but I guess I was curious. You were the representative, why at the meeting would you remove one? Or is this not the one?
This isn't the one.
It is?
It is not.
Okay, okay, so we'll save it. I called Jake last week, it's Monday, had a good conversation with him. I'm more curious about the process, and we had a pretty good conversation, I guess about 30 minutes, and I understood where you came from. I appreciate, I'm more of a process procedure type person, and it helped me a lot to understand what you went through. I think you had some newer procedures, which I appreciate, that you've put into place over the last few years, from maybe some of the things that have happened in the past to help, and I think what, maybe some direction from the board, from yourself and from administration as a whole, I think this is where we wanted to kind of go, I thought. So from what you were saying, it made sense to me, your recommendation as far as how you obtained this. So that's, you know, again, good job on the procedure and the process to get us, I think, in a better place than we've been.
Yeah, Jake, Jake started the procedure, and we ended up meeting as a group, including the coach. After the meeting was over, the consensus in the room was, we need to move forward with the non-renewal on the softball. That'd be the recommendation from, actually, the committee. But Jake, spearheading that.
I think there's also another important component to this, and that is, you don't always have to have, I should say, every year you're renewing a contract, and if the, in this case, administration and Jake, you see what's happening out there with the programs, and if you see that, you want to go in a different direction, no matter what the reason. That's up to the professional judgment of the AD. And I think, like I said, you've gone through the processes. We look at other things, and there may be reasons where you may look at another position some other time, and it's, you know, there may be warrant for, you know, keeping someone based upon some other ideas and where to go with it, but there seems to be a strong idea that we need to go a different direction, and I support it.
Brenda, anything for you?
I'm not too close to any of this, but I've seen some of the survey results and the recommendation from the AD, and, you know, based on that, I guess I wouldn't see, you know, it's interesting to hear everybody's comments, and there's always two sides on something like this, so it's, you know, it's hard to draw a line there, but it seems like when the negative starts to be that strong, it's time for a change.
I'm a baseball guy, I'm not a softball person, but there's certain things that go with any sport, and that's respect between the players and the coach. But also the ability to, for the coach to coach on his own terms without outside influence. And I'm always stuck on that, because we're certainly in a society now where our, our parents become more involved, and that's not a blame thing, it's just kind of a, the way it is, you know? Generations ago, you started in seventh grade and you worked your way up to varsity. Now we're starting in second grade, and we're taking our kids to lacrosse, to Minneapolis, to Bemidji for tournaments. My niece plays on a traveling team in Cassin, she will play in San Antonio, Texas this year, funded by her parents. So a lot of skin in the game when the kids are small, and all of a sudden, you get to seventh grade now, and, you know, thanks for the, thanks for the help, parents, but we'll take it over from here as a school. We name our coach in the seventh grade, we, we have certain rules that we go by, and kids get playing time, but it isn't the same. So I think in some cases, it's hard to let go as parents and as interactive kids in our youth program, because we've been so busy with our kids. So I understand and support the softball decision of Jake and the majority of people here. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor of the consideration to approve the non-renew of the head softball coach? Say aye. Aye. Opposed? That is carried. Consideration to approve the recommendation to non-renew the head basketball, the head girls' basketball position.
I'll make a motion.
You'll make a motion to...
To accept the recommendation to non-renew.
To non-renew.
I'll second.
Second, motion made by Rob, seconded by Kurt, to non-renew the girls' head basketball job. Discussion?
You want to start?
Mike, I just have the question, I guess, more than anything. Again, you know, when I talked to Jake, it was the same, basically the same thing that we talked about, we covered both in the same conversation, so I felt that one was the both in the same conversation. So I felt that one was, was the other and one, you know, so they didn't matter much difference to me as far as what our conversation was. But I was curious why it was looking to be removed from the agenda tonight.
After having conversation about both softball and basketball with the committee that consisted of Jake, Mr. Hodges, Ms. Geese, Mr. Stahuski, myself, within that conversation, in fairness to the coach, who's only had that program for two years. In two years, he's done more with that program, in my opinion, than they've had done since '09. There's a lack of players for the upcoming seniors and sophomores and it's been all the way through since seventh grade. There's not that many girl athletes. Volleyball numbers are done with girls. Dad, I believe dance is done with girls. Basketball is definitely done with girls. He's taken that program. He's taught those kids a lot about how to play the game, how to play defense, how to win. So after the conversation, the last Jake and I had spoke, the consensus was, we okay with keeping him as the girls' basketball coach, but removing him as a softball coach. That's why I asked to have item seven, which actually would be now item eight, removed. And it all based on the conversation I had after the meeting that we had with the other people involved in the meeting. And I don't, I don't think it's going to matter who coaches the next couple of years. They're just not going to have numbers for girls. There might be girls that don't play because of him, but there's, might be girls that don't play because of the new coach. Do we have a backup plan? I can't say that we have a backup plan. I don't think it's going to matter who coaches, to be honest, unless Mr. Davidson wants to leave the boys and come to the girls, which I'm gonna doubt that's gonna happen this year. But, sorry to put you on the spot.
But it's not just about the number of players, correct? The conversation of who would be playing, correct?
Say that again?
The, the recommendation wasn't because of the number of players we would or would not have for the season. There was more involved with that, correct?
That, that had a part to do with, with that in basketball as well.
Right. Okay. But a part, it wasn't if we...
Wasn't the whole reason. There are, there's multiple reasons.
Right. Okay.
You know, what's hard for me is that we've used the lower numbers and we understand there's lower numbers in the program. There's no, lower numbers in everyone's program. It's just, it's just where it seems to be going right now. Athletics always takes an up and down. Several years ago, we asked Coach Bender to resign or leave our program, just coming off a state tournament and, you know, one of the only banners we have up there. We asked him, and part of the reason behind that is we could see that our numbers were dwindling at the lower level. And somehow we held his, him accountable. And in, I guess at least in part, that you're not reaching down to the lower levels. That was two coaches ago. And are we just missing the point all the time? Or is it just a fact of life? And when I look at the numbers, yeah, it's, it's very scary and it's very scary to a basketball guy. I've been around it for 35 years. I know the game quite well. As an official, I see, I've seen him on the road and I've seen him at home. And I can't honestly say that he's done everything that as an official, I'd say, geez, call that timeout or what are you doing right now? And it's part of what we do as officials. You have to concentrate on the game, but you're always thinking, boy, is that coach gonna call a timeout? He should. Well, tactically, I can agree with what he does. So I think on those terms, I think he does quite a fine job. I'm still stuck that when he gets into the locker room, that he's not, he's too forthright, for lack of better terms. Maybe his, maybe his approach has to be better. But I'm not sure it's the point in my life where I can tell a guy that he has to go after two years and use something like numbers as an excuse. Again, I, I'm a little old school because I'm a little old, but I just feel like we need our kids to understand wins and losses. We need our kids to understand so many things that a coach can sometimes convey. And it's away from sports. And I don't know if that coach does it or not, but I think many coaches are afraid to do it because the repercussions might be, you know, that's my job as a parent. We don't want you to talk about those things with the kids. It's all part of growing up. As our kids get older, they rely less on their parents and more on their peers and their teachers for solutions in life. And that's not new. That's what it is. Every periodically you pick up, it's just like that. So we, we have to weigh this very carefully. And Jake's effort and the committee's effort notwithstanding, I'm not sure I'm there yet on this particular job. That's my turn.
I'll just say a little something and that is, I think one of the hardest things to do is to make the decision that administration is making right here, right now. We as a board, sometimes we look and we, we wonder why aren't these tough decisions being made sometimes? And then when it happens, you know, then we, we come up here and we make a decision to refute that. I, I think if the, the, the AD wants, sees this as an opportunity to go in a different direction, I think we need to support that because so many times we don't. Again, it's, it's hard to make that change. It's hard to say, look, we want someone to leave based on their performance. Very hard thing to do. And that's, sometimes that's why you don't see it much. And now it's there. We have to, I think, rely on the AD because he wants to see a program go in a different direction.
But if you're basing on his performance, then this, that would be the absolutely wrong decision to make.
That's not my decision. That's...
I'm just saying, when you're talking about performance, it's not a performance issue.
Right. But I know nothing about basketball. I'll just go right out and say it. I know a lot about football. I know a lot about nothing. But I do know, I do know that it's very, it's a very hard decision to make. And when the opportunity is there where we want to see this go in a different direction because we've struggled with this so many times. And now here's an opportunity where it's like, well, maybe if people say, you know, if we keep the coach, some, some aren't going to join up. Well, okay, but those that were going to stay are going to stay and maybe we'll get some more. I don't know. But there's an opportunity to take this in a different direction. I think we have to support it.
Brenda? Anything?
I don't have much more to add, but I, I think there were some comments that concerned me about, you know, aside from the direction of the program, but of the girls' self-esteem and fairness. And those concerned me a lot, too. And so I guess I would take that into consideration. And this is all for me, third-hand. So I, again, I have to respect the opinion or the recommendation of the AD who's a lot closer to it.
I am, and I don't mean to direct the tea, Jerry, but I have to in a way.
Go ahead.
I mean, it made it on the agenda.
Yep.
I talked to Jake Thursday, Friday. Friday, I think I talked to Jake. And now we are on Monday and you're, I'm not hearing anything different from Jake and you're kind of going against your own committee's administrat, or recommendation, the way it sounds right now.
No, I'm not.
You're not? So the...
No.
The recommendation from that committee is to non-renew or is not?
The recommendation that I was given on Friday after post-meeting was they'd be okay with him staying for basketball, but not for softball.
And the agenda didn't get updated after that? I'm just...
I, I always, we, send it on Thursday. So it was sent on Thursday. The meeting was on Friday.
How did it, I guess timing. I mean, before Friday then, because when I talked to Jake, he didn't indicate any changes in his thoughts. Because that's really what I wanted to find out, a lot of, again, supporting the administration. I know you and Bob are big components of, we need to support our administration. So I find it interesting that it's still on. That's all.
It was brought up.
Huh?
It was brought up. I'd asked to have it removed prior to coming to the meeting.
Right.
But being it was already sent, the only change I could make is to request it before the meeting tonight.
Okay.
That's why it's still on.
I think this conversation represents us exactly who we are. We're torn by this. And, you know, in, in the conversation with Jake, I think he's troubled by it, too, because you don't take these things lightly. This is, this is maybe an opportunity for him to continue coaching or to never coach again. And you have to get a feel for that. Are we ready to make?
So for some clarification, then, we're still approving a recommended, recommendation to non-renew based upon administration. They're still supporting that. Is that right?
I'm not hearing anything...
Jake, that's been difficult for you. Where do you stand?
Well, I'm one on the committee, so I'll say that. I'm not doing my job if I'm not providing opportunities for kids. And I'm afraid with the current arrangement, we're not going to have opportunities for kids in the near future. But I'm one of, one person on that committee. So my recommendation remains, but the committee came to a different recommendation. Consensus. Which either way, I mean, I'll do whatever you guys decide.
So you're, we're basing this based upon the committee or upon the AD?
Originally written was my recommendation.
Okay.
But now this conversation...
Okay. I got you.
Yep.
We do have a motion and a second to non-renew the head coaching for the girls' basketball program. So a yes vote would be to non-renew. And a no vote would be the continuance, or at least not, not renewing at this time. We would come again right before the season starts, I guess, to make our recommendations. Isn't that the way we do it the season before?
That's correct.
Right.
So I think we're, we're torn enough by this that I would, I would ask for a roll call vote, just so we know exactly where everyone is. So we have a, a motion to second on the floor to approve the non-renew of the head girls' basketball job. Clerk?
Okay. Roll call vote. Rob?
Yes.
Brenda? Yes. Bob?
No.
Jerry?
No.
Kurt?
Yes.
The coach will be non-renewed on a three-two vote for the head girls' basketball job. Item number nine, the response to Mr. McGuire's comments. Last, you know, people are allowed to come up and give their public input and I certainly wouldn't want to scare anyone off. Mr. McGuire, of course, was concerned when he came up. He talked about, he didn't want to level any criticism our way. But he had some concerns about the spending for the community. And when he was finished, he asked for comments. Now, the only comment I had at the time had more to do with the number of custodians that we had in relative terms to today. Part of the things on public input essentially says, the board cannot engage in discussion or debate during his three to five minutes, but will take information and find answers if appropriate. I did tell Mr. McGuire that he had some valid concerns. And I'd like to preface this. No one knows Mr. McGuire in his capacity as superintendent better than I do, with the possible exception of Lori. I have a great deal of respect and admiration for Mr. McGuire. He served our community when we were at or near statutory operating debt. When he left, things were significantly better financially for us. So he served a, a great purpose for him and I admire his point of view. I was kind of taken aback when he lifted a ad from the newspaper and said, we had $167 for an ad here and I think that's too high. And I think there's other avenues to go rather than spend 170 bucks for an ad. It was actually $170 for eight ads, four in the Beacon, four in the Shopper. And that would be a, a much less of a critical expenditure for us. Yeah, maybe we had too many lines on that. But I'll argue the point of, if it costs us 22 bucks an ad, I'll, I'll argue those $11 that it was just fine. We got a, a very good employee out of that. I don't think we should, I don't think we should have any issues with that. It wasn't one, it was eight. He was quite concerned about a cameraman being hired at $20 an hour. And again, he, he had some concerns like, is this what we want to do with our money? Are we spending this as well as we could be spending it? Well, the ad is here and since he lifted an ad, I will too. But nowhere here does it mention the term cameraman because that's not what we were hiring. Somewhere along the way, he got confused by the hiring process or the job description, but this job is much more technical than a cameraman. Now, we've hired students in the past. We've paid them a small stipend to do that, but that isn't where that ad was. So I feel that maybe that's an erroneous statement on his part. He was concerned about lawn mowing, although he prefaced that by understanding that when we mow lawn this summer, it's because we, we have people that need to be employed for the summer and our full-time custodians should be out doing something and they can't be in the facility when we're working on it. The other, the other concern he had was snow removal. And, you know, I had some concerns. I talked to Dave, our head maintenance guy, and we subsequently had something sent out to us that it was, it runs about $50,000 a season for snow removal. Dave sat here a few meetings before we okayed this and I just looked right at him. I said, you sure you can do this? Now, we haven't, Mr. McGuire initiated the, the snow removal and the lawn mowing 20 years ago. So it's a, it's an issue that he's pretty close to. But Dave said, I'm, I'm pretty sure we can. We saved 50 grand by not doing this. We'll save 50 grand next year by not doing this if our averages are there. We purchased more than $100,000 of equipment, some of which we use for snow removal, some of which we use for a variety of other things on our campus. It's been a godsend to us. We needed the extra equipment. Our campus is much more enhanced than it was before. We spruced it up a number of years ago before Mr. Bringle gave us that valuable donation. We use so much more of it. And I think the equipment is a good thing for us. If, if in two years, we get back into snow removal, we still have $100,000 worth of equipment that didn't cost us any more due to the diligence of our supervisor on, on operations. I personally think that was a good purchase and I think most people would, too. But I have issues with those. We talk about the irrigation on the soccer field. You know, whether or not we did it, or we are going to do it, you can make a case for some Title IX for a poor facility. You can also make a case that we had to do much more with our soccer field than just irrigate it. Like Mr. McGuire said, it could use a, a heavy makeover. It could use four inches of black dirt. We decided it was more prudent for us to put in irrigation first. We couldn't afford the, the $100,000 plus for the enhancement in other areas, but we could afford the irrigation. So I don't think we did anything wrong there, but it was a three to two vote. So there was others that thought we could have tabled it. But we moved forward with it because we want our facility to improve this year even slightly. It's better than waiting until we have all the money to do it. So it's phase work. There's other areas that he spoke to that I won't get into because I promised that I would take no more time to address this and he took the time to speak about it. So five minutes is five minutes. He made his comments to us. I'm responding to the comments. And so that, as far as I'm concerned, this case is closed because that's what we did. We, we addressed his comments and answered them. Thank you.
Could I add something real quick? I'll be about one minute.
You know, it's my prerogative and I choose not to have you respond to it because...
Okay. I'm gonna make a statement then, Bob. Your comments were those of yours and not of the board. So just so the public understands, those are your comments, not the board's comments.
I, yep. Yep.
That's what I wanted to say.
Okay. Next up is the, a regular school board meeting of September 12th. In the boardroom, we're moving home again. Board members, if you have any, anything else to add, contact Lori or Beth. Board members, any additional information, news reports? Not sure what that means, but we'll go with it. I would look for a motion to adjourn.
Just, I'm just, I'm sorry. Just for, when does negotiations start for teachers contracts? Now, is that coming up?
We'll start again next spring.
Oh, okay.
We're in the, no, we're in the second year of that contract. We're on the, no, we're on the second year of that contract, so we're...
Let's not hurry, Kurt.
Yeah. No, it's good to think ahead.
They say you should be starting, and I don't know.
Yeah. And we've done a really nice job of finishing on time, so, you know, and Rob's in the room here. We typically start talking in April, start moving forward in May. We, we've never really been behind, so our EAs like to get at it right away, too.
That doesn't have to be the fault.
Yep.
Okay. Look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Jerry, second.
One second.
You lost, Brenda. Motion by Jerry, second by Kurt. Any other discussion? All in favor of adjournments, say aye. Aye. Opposed? We are closed.